Last chance to sign up for public comment. Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Gregg Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome everyone and let's stand up for the public comment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a guest speaker today. It is not Joanne. This is Bill. He's a representative from the FDPA ACC Resolution Team regarding fair districting.
Yeah, I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. And first thing I want to do is get this working properly. If we could do the lights on, that would be awesome.
Or our...
Yeah, do the other one. And turn that side.
There's a short little video that explains what gerrymandering is and how it works. This is pretty good. This is very good. Thank you. And I apologize for being slow working this thing. But it's gonna work.
Districting or gerrymandering is about fractions, percentages. These coins represent voters in an evenly divided state, 50 dimes, 50 pennies. They elect 10 representatives. That means each district map must contain 10 coins. Of course, real people don't live in neat roads, so let's mix them up. This is our hypothetical state. Let's see what happens if the dimes draw the maps, 10 coins in each district. So first thing we do is pack the pennies, give them two safe districts, but pack them solid. The remaining eight districts are won by the dimes, by smaller but still comfortable margins. The dimes win eight districts and the pennies win two. The dimes overwhelmingly control the legislature. Of course, if the pennies drew the district lines, the opposite could happen. Let's rig it for the pennies. For the pennies, we pack the dimes into two safe districts and crack the remaining eight districts and win by the same margin, eight to two. Well, now that we've destroyed democracy, let's consider how this would look if the maps were drawn based on compactness and keeping communities of interest together. You get evenly divided districts in an evenly divided state. There are some that go heavily dime, there are some that go penny, but that's to be expected. People live where they live and that's what democracy is about. It's not about party bosses rigging elections for them.
That's how gerrymandering works and that's what's been going on.
Oh, Catherine, hi. And this is not something I wanted to show you. The chair of this committee announced at the end session, rather than putting place an independent citizens redistricting commission, would instead put the power even more promptly in power.
Okay. I have a sort of slideshow that I could show you, or, you know, if people are interested. If it's all right, if it won't take me too much time, let me know. I should practice this more. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. It's infrared and it needs to go here. There we go. Okay, so this is just an introduction with Fair Districts PA. By the way, I'm a volunteer with Fair Districts in Center County. And I, well, basically, this is an appeal. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm nervous and not doing too well. What we're asking is for municipalities throughout the state, but especially in Center County, to adopt a resolution calling on the legislature to reform this process. You know what? I'm just gonna be wasting your time if I keep doing this, so I'm just gonna... You all have copies of the resolution, right?
Do we have the lights again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I made up the resolution in case they wanted to adopt it tonight.
I actually have. Oh, thanks. Shall I read the resolution? So there's a whole bunch of wherasses, but the bottom line is now therefore be it resolved that the Gregg Township Board of Supervisors does hereby support legislative efforts to amend the Pennsylvania Constitution to assign the decennial task of both legislative and congressional redistricting to an independent citizens redistricting commission. And that's all. It doesn't specifically address any of the enabling legislation which is now being debated in this state legislature. All of you got copies of the handout that I passed out, didn't you? Catherine, did you get one? You can link. You got one there? I have another. So, gerrymandering is, as you saw in the movie, it's politicians of whichever party happens to be in control of the legislature drawing boundaries so it's basically that they can pick their voters rather than the voters picking their representatives. And this handout has some really good examples of some of the more egregious examples of legislative districts in Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania is actually either the worst in the nation or one of the top three in the nation as far as gerrymandering goes. And we're simply asking every municipality, every borough, every township to sign this, to adopt this resolution urging the legislature to do something about it. Basically, to set up an independent citizens commission so that it's not the, just the party leadership in the legislature doing, drawing the maps. In the past, the maps have been drawn behind closed doors in secret. And, you know, there's not been any recourse to that. Yeah, so, I think, you know, I'm so nervous, I'm just gonna ask you guys if anyone has any questions, and I probably answer them better than I could think. Do you folks wanna ask any questions?
How does what you're doing work? You're trying to gather resolutions at township to township.
Right, yeah. I have a... Yes. Every municipality in Clinton County has passed such a resolution. I mean, they're all the same except for the name of the municipality.
Yeah.
Everyone in Center County, oh, I'm sorry, in Clinton County and in Center County, the boroughs of Belfont State College, Howard, Phillipsburg, Snowshoe, Milheim, Milesburg, and Center Hall have all passed it. And the townships of Rush, Patton, Half Moon, Ferguson College, Harris, Howard Springs, Gregg, Potter, Curtain, Burnside, and Penn have signed it.
Not Gregg. Not Gregg, yeah.
Not... Oh, you're right. How did I do that?
Well, that's what they told me the other time, too, and I said we hadn't passed it.
That's right. And I put this in here, I was going by the spreadsheet.
And she said it was on there, right.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Well, hopefully, you know, maybe you'll see if they can do that. And also the county commissioners have signed on. So it's just a matter of going on record, showing the state legislature that yes, the citizens really would like to see this problem solved. And it really is a problem because in so many races for state rep or state senator, there's no, there's nobody, there are people running unopposed for some of these offices for, I think, a majority, or maybe not a majority, but a large number of offices, the, it's only one person running, so you don't have much choice. And it's really a result of safe districts where, you know, whichever party has that candidate knows that the other party can't, you know, there's no chance of it being a contested election. Does that help?
Any questions?
Yeah. Yeah. What's your timeline for putting this all together?
Well, in order to have it done in time for, the redistricting has to be done after a census. It's always done after, every 10 years after the census. Census will be in 2020, and so the redistricting, which has to be done to account for population changes, that will happen in 2021 or 2022. But, so that seems like a long way off. However, in Pennsylvania, these, right now the state constitution says the legislature in charge is in charge, which means whichever party is in charge of the legislature, it has been Republicans for, I don't know, they did it in 2011. Who knows what's gonna happen, you know, this next time around. I know that some Democrats really want a chance to gerrymander and, you know, they get in their licks. So, but in Pennsylvania, the state constitution has to be amended to allow for a citizens redistricting commission. And it has to be, and to amend this constitution, it has to be passed this session, which means by July 6th at the latest. And then it has to be passed in the next legislative session. And then the citizens have to approve it in an up or down vote whenever the, whenever the next general election is. Either the primary, if things move fast, or the general election in November, the citizens get to say yes or no on the, whatever the legislation is. So it's actually pretty critical that, right now, the next two weeks are pretty critical. Now, the senate has just passed a bill, the state senate has just passed a bill, which, there's some controversy about it, but there is legislation in the works. So we just wanna keep up the pressure, let the politicians in Harrisburg know that the citizens really want this. And, you know, don't stop now.
Any questions from the audience?
Yeah.
Who picks the commission?
I'm sorry.
Who picks the commission?
I believe it's, right now, it's going to be, I think, four members from each of the big, you know, the two major parties, and three people that are not associated with any party. And in the legislation that's being debated right now, there's a prohibition against using any legislator, I believe anybody employed by or related to any legislator. And also, they are, in drawing the maps, whenever they do the maps, they're prohibited from using past voting records of people, like age and gender, that, all that kind of information is disallowed. So there's a lot of safeguards for who gets to draw the maps. Did that help? Did that answer your question or not quite yet?
Yeah, I just, I'm thinking it'd just be much easier to put it into a computer and divide.
Well, I'm sure that that will be done. They do that. I mean, they do it now, big time, but they, the data they put in is who voted, what party, when, you know, and how reliable are they to vote that way? And there's an amazing amount of information that's available, and the computer maps are very sophisticated. And the commission would use that same technology, but they wouldn't be allowed by law to use any data pertaining to, you know, who the people are likely to vote for.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate you coming out and doing your presentation. Thanks for sharing that with us. And we'll discuss it in the motions.
I would urge us to support this. This is important for our democracy and fairness in the election process. It's more important than many people realize. We have to make a decision tonight. Well, July 6th is your deadline for collecting what you've been collecting, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
One to next meeting?
My idea would have to last.
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion that we support this resolution. I don't see how you can go wrong by support.
Yeah, it really doesn't specify what you want, what laws you want enacted to make this work. It just says, we want to amend the constitution to allow it to happen.
You could pass out the resolution if they see that.
Do we have any more public comment on it? Yea or nay?
I'm about two-thirds of the phone, but I've been trying. Like I said, I don't see a way to go wrong. This gets a phone without people to say, look, let's think about it. And that's the first major step. And that's definitely happened to get people involved in thinking about it.
Chris, what's your opinion?
I don't like a specific law where it actually supports it.
Well, we don't have enough time to think a whole lot about what's going on. Information presented in 10 minutes and asked you to make your decisions. And my question would be more relative to along the lines, maybe the question that was brought up, and that is, what's to prevent the same type of action occurring by a different group of people coming up with the same results in favor of another group? So without having enough information, knowing what the process is, and I recognize what you're saying, that it just doesn't support a specific legislation, but that would be my concern. If you have a system that's imperfect now, you just as easily have another system that's imperfect without a lot of thought and consideration into that, so.
Well, you could, but this is trying to put an end to that happening.
Well, but without knowing what the means to an end is, I don't know how you can determine this is the means and the end. Because if this simply says whoever the group now is is making decisions should not be the group and it should be a new group.
Well, it's, right now, it's the party in power in the legislature. Like in the movie with, you know, it's either the dimes or the pennies. The leadership of that party gets to do it. It's just like, you know, just the party bosses. And they do it behind closed doors and they have sophisticated computer models and drop mapping software and they just, they pick their voters. And this would, well, it would be a commission. First of all, the people on it are not allowed to be, well, they would be, they would be picked by the two parties, but it would be equal number of Democrats and Republicans and then some independents. And as I said, I think the main safeguard is that it would be illegal to use past voting data. So... Yeah, that's the main thing. It would be illegal. And the process would be transparent. It would, they, it would put proposed maps on a website so people could see them ahead of time and would have to approve them.
Can I, I guess, if this is a question, it's the way, I think it's kind of impossible to know this better, but the alternative to this, am I right, this is a question, is the kind of Supreme Court action that we're under right now?
Yeah.
Which changed our history, I'm sorry, not federal, not like the federal. So the alternative is get something, constitutional lending process for citizens, or court action. Am I right? Is that right?
No, that's true. And of course, it, you know, the League of Women Voters brought a lawsuit and it's expensive and they have lawyers and it's a very cumbersome process. And I believe that this, this would be a lot more streamlined, I believe. It's actually not that hard to draw these maps, especially if you're not trying to pick exactly the right voters. And there have been, I think about half a dozen states have very successfully done this. In increasing the competitiveness of elections and increasing voter turnout and voter satisfaction with the legislature. I mean, state legislatures are notoriously unpopular. This way, it would allow the voters a lot more say in what goes on because, you know, you'd have, I think the main thing is that the people elected under the system would be much more likely to listen to all their constituents and not just the constituents from one party or the other party.
There's still a motion for a resolution to order. I mean, I remember number seven.
I feel a little like Chris at this point, to answer the question, you know, in a short period of time. And there are any way we could have any time at all. Which I know you're on a short string of words.
Yeah, I apologize for that. And we have, we've got mixed messages in our organization and we thought that already passed here and actually nobody has even been here. Carrie, do you have anything up to you?
I'm in support of a fair districting, but again, we don't really know what that is or who's going to be doing it. And to me, from a township perspective, this is about a state, about the state districting. This doesn't apply to our elections, whereas individual citizens could certainly write letters of support, which I think is what you guys have been, you've been getting signatures and stuff for a long time, because I know I've seen them around. I don't think it hurts to sign the resolution. It's not creating anything, but at the same time, I...
It doesn't really hurt.
Do you have an opinion on that?
No, I mean, I agree with what Carrie says. I, whether you should, just as a matter of policy, I keep to myself. From a legal perspective, no, I don't think it has any legal significance. The resolution itself is really just a support, yea or nay for what's stated in the resolution.
Yeah, it's just turning over the, it's just allowing the legislature to turn it over to a citizens commission is what it's doing. The legislature still has to pass bills to, for this to happen. And there are bills in the House and the Senate that they're working towards this. And there's a lot of debate, a lot of haggling. I know the Senator former had, was, they headed a senate, state government committee, and he, he actually shepherded this bill, Senate Bill 22, through the senate, and it just passed two days ago. He insisted on having the legislators, still having a significant amount of control, but has a concession to fair districts. He allowed there to be a lot of safeguards like transparency and prohibitions of having, any, using any voting records in drawing the maps.
Still don't feel comfortable in making a decision that quick.
I should have showed you the video, slideshow, but...
Can we have a week at all without having another meeting or no?
Well, it has to be done, but it's pretty supervised.
Correct, yeah.
It doesn't hurt anybody. It's, it just makes the voting more fair. That's all it does.
It's the whole thing.
For either party. It does it favor a party.
Yeah, we, in fair districts, we, none of us know really, I mean, well, some of us may know who, who's in what party. Like, the people that I've been working with in trying to get this resolution through, I don't, I don't actually know whether they're Republicans or Democrats.
I'm a Republican and I support this. Republicans are in power now.
And Jake Corman is obviously a Republican, the Senate Majority Leader, and he's strongly in favor of this right now. And, you know, yeah.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
I apologize for getting so tired.
If you guys will sign, maybe you sign a copy and then we'll just give it to him and he can take it and then we don't have to, and then just sign more for us.
I have, I have a file that has his addresses that he's supposed to mail.
Oh, okay, okay.
The printer's not working.
Okay, okay. You can just email it to me.
Email it. It'd be easier anyway.
There should be one more that I can sign. If you guys will sign it.
Yeah, just sign one, you know.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Now sign up for public comment. Move on to liaison reports. First is the solicitor's report. He has nothing for us.
No, nothing. That's not...
Don, emergency management coordinator.
Another thing is quiet right now. We just went through some rain here the last couple days. And back at my place, I had two and a half inches over at Rush Valley. I understand there was about three and a half inches. Penn State coming down Drew was high, it was coming up a little bit, but as far as I know, nobody got stressed with me about opening a dam over there at Penn State or anything. So I think everything was handled very well. We have some meetings coming up. I have to check in whenever she's in that is, but other than that, that's all we have.
Thank you. Gregg Township Fire Company.
I'm in place of Scott tonight. I'm Aaron Bressler. Now, we've had six calls over the past month, nothing real significant. We covered the antique show, as Don said earlier, and pretty quiet. We covered the antique show. There was no calls over there, but we did have a booth set up for our gun rifle tickets and we sold over 100 tickets, so it was successful in that way. Our bingo that we had over at the fire hall is done till October. We want to thank the community for their support. This coming Saturday, the Adilery's having a soup and hoagie sale from nine to two, or they usually run out way before two, so I would encourage you to get there. I know, Don, you're in the audience, if they need any, if anybody needs any help, if you guys need help over there, if anybody wants to volunteer to help out, how you guys are suited for help, but you can see Don. We probably saw over the past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, Sunday especially in Spring Mills, we had a lot of fire companies in town. We did a rural water movement class. It was a 16-hour class. So there was a lot of us that spent, we ended up, it wasn't 16 hours because of the rain on Sunday, but we spent a good 12 hours on how we get water to the scenes of fires in rural areas because we don't always have high ends. So we had Reiversburg, Spring Mills, Bullsburg, Center Hall, and State College participate. We had about 20 people participating in it and it was good teamwork effort. And it was good teamwork effort to make sure everybody knows how everybody's pieces of equipment in the valley work. Excuse me. We also have an upcoming event. It's a car, truck, motorcycle drive-in show, June 23rd. Ring dates June 24th. Registration's from 11 to 1:00. Anybody interested, you can contact A.J. Myers. There's flyers up throughout the valley. If anybody wants to take a fire with them, I brought a couple. They're posted in area businesses. There'll be food and prizes up there. So hopefully the weather's going to be nice and holds out for that. Scott and Charles have worked their butts off with multiple agencies to get our grant information correct so that we can get some federal grant. We've been missing out on those the past couple of years. Charles, I don't want to comment anymore on that. But hopefully we have everything in line to get some grant money.
Basically, you know, we had to go back and research and get the numbers and the different codes to be able to. We researched, lost almost $12,000 last year, just simply because we didn't have the proper information to pass on. I think everything at this point's in line, so we should be good.
And the sad thing is that money was right there for us to be able to get and use it.
And Benning Hall's office gave us a lot of help, but we just weren't able to do it.
Positive thing, we're getting new members every month. We're getting good community feedback for our improvements over at the fire hall. And one last thing, the, we have around 90 prizes on our tickets for our carnival that's coming up, August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. And I would want to ask the Board of Supervisors if they could help to cover the cost of the printing of the tickets. The estimate is going to be around $400. I know that you guys have helped out in the past. I'm not asking for $400, but I'm not sure what you give them in the past. I'm sorry I don't have that information with me. If you could help out a little bit with that, that would be, that would be...
Yeah, I have a question. What's the Jersey Shore state with this?
I wrote the letter and talked to Stephanie and she has passed that. Actually, the lady is waiting to, I got to give her a call back. She just needs the name of who to make the check out to.
Yeah. Yeah, well, she called me and asked me that. And I said, make it out to Burke Township.
Well, it usually goes to the fire company. That's our, we can just make the check for them.
How much for the whole thing?
Well, no, no, they, they make it, this is totally, they just make a donation for the entertainment and just for the cover, some of the cost that they, so that is a letter that I write for them and then they get the money.
In the past, it was just the ticket, printing the tickets.
But that's not the Jersey Shore stuff. That has nothing to do with it. The Jersey Shore stuff...
What I was asking was the printing of the tickets.
And we budgeted $700 for that. This year, it's in our budget. So if you just want to make a motion, can...
I entertain a motion to approve paying for the fire company carnival tickets.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Oh, you make the motion. Dr. Odom made a motion to pay for tickets. There's a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
By the way, I have gun rifle tickets for sale also. Anybody see me after the meeting? Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Carol let us know that she was going to be late, so we'll move on to the Valley Code Force Agency. Could you guys all get the email with their report? I just sent a couple days ago.
Please have a copy of the report. It's been steadily busy. As of this writing, we had issued 107 permits. And as of tonight, I issued 16 more. So we're averaging about five a week. And in Banner Township, so far, we've issued 57 zoning permits, which are not included in this. So work's been steady. And, you know, I guess at the goal when we took any other towns lists, so that the Corps Four wouldn't have to contribute any money at any point. And I think achieving our goal with that. As far as Greg Township, nothing major. Francis has been keeping his properties somewhat in order, although we have a trial coming up next week again for one Penn Township.
So I don't know what the answer's going to be with that. I have the feeling if he gets convicted again, the judge is going to sound something. I guess in the case over here, the sefist that actually helped it cleaned up, he had his family members due, all of his in jail. Other than that, not really a lot going on. Questions, answers, concerns?
Does, does he have another property over there?
He's got another one in Greg Township on the back of Cooper Street where it goes up to Musser, which would be the next stage with him. Because that is also unfortunately horrible. And the people that live next door are heavy. But the one in Penn Township, he actually put about, he put one of a football field of gas cans, trash, lawn mowers. It's just horrendous. And it's literally 100 yards from Penns Creek.
Lindsay with Penns Valley EMS could not be here tonight. She said there are two fundraisers coming up actually tomorrow and Saturday. Tomorrow's at Farmer's Mills, there's a spaghetti dinner. And Saturday is at Yoder, what's his first name, on 45.
Vibreezy Acres.
Vibreezy Acres. Paige Sherd, naming, yeah. Is doing barbecue chicken Saturday. So those are their fundraisers coming up. They have had a technology advisor come in and give them a free consultation about their technology in the EMS building as far as the office stuff, like printers. So Lindsay wanted me to just pass that along as well. But that's all the news from the EMS. Unless anybody else has any...
Penns Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, the Penns Valley Regional Planning Commission last met on May 21st. We talked about the Potter's Mills Gap project, which is Phase Three. It's being, it's under construction. And this may be old news to some people, but I'll read it anyway in case you hadn't heard. So starting Wednesday, May 23rd, westbound traffic will make use of a crossover through the project area from Decker Valley Road to Sand Mountain Road. This means there will be one lane available for each direction of traffic instead of the normal two lanes each direction. Lane restrictions will be in effect through the fall of this year. So like I said, it's probably old news for a number of people. The goal of Phase Three, which they're in construction for now, is to reconstruct Route 322 from Sand Mountain Road to Potter's Mills, including a new Route 322-144 intersection. The project will cost about $82 million. Glenn Hawbaker is a low bidder on it. PennDOT expects a new roadway to be open to traffic by the fall of 2020, which is quite a while. Another item we talked about, the fact that the remainder of the evening for the meeting on the 21st was a meeting which is coming up on Tuesday, June 19th, next week. I'll read you the advertisement, which was posted in the Center of Times. The Penns Valley Regional Planning Commission will hold a joint meeting of the officials of Center Hall and Millheim Boroughs and Gregg, Ames, Miles, Penn, and Potter Townships and representatives of the Penns Valley Fire Companies on Tuesday, June 19th at 7:00 PM in the gymnasium of the Old Great School Community and Recreation Center. The purpose of the meeting is to hear presentations on local tax revenue sources and discuss funding emergency services. Following the meeting, the Municipal Emergency Medical Services Committee will meet to discuss options for funding emergency medical services. The public is welcome. At that meeting, the Director of the Senate Tax Agency will be speaking. She will address the local services tax and respond to questions. There's supposed to be a representative there from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors to provide information on how communities in Pennsylvania have addressed funding issues for emergency services. There's an note here, this person's been invited, but as of, the date of this letter is not yet confirmed. So that's it.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission met on June 4th. There's not too much going on in the way of subdivisions or any activity of that nature. The supervisors had asked us to take a look at the existing zoning map and the official map of the township. The Planning Commission reviewed that and recommended to the supervisors that it stay as is and no change if we're recommended to the past. See if they happen to bother them.
Tri-Park? Joel, do you have any update you want to give on that?
I don't know. David have anything to, if you want to do a first?
Yeah, we have a few things to go with.
Yeah. I need to look at your letter. I, I don't know...
Here.
Well, I...
Oh, you haven't? Are you talking about this part, the amendment, Joel?
Yeah. Joel, I don't know any, well, I don't know much about the amendment to the charter.
So in, in the original joint articles of agreement for the Tri-Municipal Park before Tri-Parking was ever thought of, there was an amendment, there was a second amendment made to that joint articles of agreement that $15,000 had to stay in that account. They couldn't be used in the initial grants, the first phase, the grants coming in for that. So when we, when Tri-Park Inc. was created and we made that motion to move the funds over into the Tri-Park Inc. account, $15,000 was still remaining in the joint account because of the second amendment in the joint articles of agreement. Does that make sense? So the Tri-Municipal Park Inc. is asking the boards from the three municipalities to make an amendment to the joint articles of agreement in order to move those funds from that account over to the Tri-Park Inc. account. Because it has to be official that way as opposed to the motion that we made. It has to be an actual amendment to the articles of agreement.
So the motion would read as stated in on the agenda, correct? Motion to adopt a third amendment to the joint articles of agreement that we're going to have for, is that what you would say? In the motion?
Yeah. I would say as stated in the May 22nd, 2018 letter from Joel Myers.
At the beginning of that, the motion, right, ended up?
Yes. Or something to that.
Okay. I'll make the motion. I'm not sure how I'm going to state this, but I'll make the motion to amend paragraph 422 of the Second Amendment to the joint articles of agreement to move the $15,000.
As stated in the May 22nd, 2018 letter from Joel Myers. She's got it. I think, okay.
It is, it is that 9A. You're right.
Whoa, I'm sorry, say that again.
It's 9A of the agenda.
Right, so just almost like that. I mean, he said it in a little bit different form, but, yeah, okay.
I'll second that, Jim.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The B on there is no longer something to be discussed in it.
Does that answer your question?
I'll just make a very brief report in addition. And thank you for transferring that money. We really need some working capital right now. And that's going to help us use money that we really were struggling for. Well, I really want to say that we had a meeting today and the grant money and everything is falling into place as far as breaking ground in August. We're going to have an official groundbreaking ceremony on Saturday, August 11th, at 11 o'clock at the park. So invite everybody to come to that. And David's been working very hard trying to do what Penn Vest continues to ask him to do for the paperwork. And we appreciate his diligence in doing that work. And David's doing that for the park, on behalf of the park. So I'd have to clear. Any, any questions? So we will have, the next three months after August 15th, we'll be moving around. And we'll have two athletic fields and have all the EMS practices done for the first quadrant. And we also will have, I can't tell you the feat of walking trail, hiking trail, but I think it's over, I won't say a number, but a significant amount of walking trail available at that time. Any questions? So we're finally moving around and, and we had to rework our contract to save the grant money. And we spent a lot of time trying to make this all fit. And we've done that, so, thank you.
I have a... We still have longer to park than...
Yeah. I'm not belaboring this. I've been going back and forth a lot with Penn Vest. The closing is in July, but they like having everything, and this is for every project, basically close 20 days in advance so that their folks can go through the paperwork and check it and make sure it's okay. So that 20 days in advance is next Thursday. Now, also like every Penn Vest closing I've ever done, which isn't that many, maybe 20 or so years, they have completely rewritten the rulebook two to three weeks out. And they just keep changing the paperwork. At this point in time, you know, Greg is guaranteeing that up to a third of the debt, I should say, of this loan, that Penn Vest is, excuse me, Tri-Municipal Park is taking from Penn Vest. So it's about $107,000 that the loan amount is for for the park. Greg is guaranteeing a third of that. So you can do the math. But that's essentially the maximum amount that Greg would be responsible for plus potential interest of whatever additional. In the worst-case scenario, if the park were to default under a loan. We had hoped and planned to submit, to just have the paperwork tonight to sign. But on Monday of this week, Penn Vest's new council that's assigned to the project completely changed the documents that they want the park to submit and have ready for the closing. And so we did that by Tuesday, and I haven't heard back from them to get their approval saying it's okay. What it's going to be is basically a guarantee document, an agreement between Greg and the park, which is similar to a guarantee document, and then a couple of opinions and counsel. Rather than go through all of that now because we can't, I haven't gotten approval back from Penn Vest to give you okay. What you all should do, and this is also to avoid having to meet again, like next Wednesday night or something, is you should have a motion to authorize the Chair and the Secretary to take any actions necessary to complete the closing paperwork. And submit the paperwork to Penn Vest on behalf of the township.
And submit what?
And submit that paperwork to Penn Vest on behalf of the township. So if you, if you make that motion, I'll then, we can take care of it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I'm here.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. One of the sewer authority, the email from, he couldn't be here today, said the month was slow. Greg Township Sewer, our monthly report, there's no significant new business at the May monthly meeting for either authority. Sincerely, Bill Morrison. We'll move on to the Secretary Treasurer's report. Anything you want to say before we go through that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 10th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to accept the all-time financial report. Just so, we did get most of our real estate taxes. We did get the bulk of our real estate taxes in. So of course, you know, now we have the money to, we, I reimbursed the savings account, the $15,000 that we had borrowed. I just wanted to ask if you want me to go ahead and then now pay the $7,000 that we budgeted for the EMS? dollars that we budgeted for the EMS? Do you want me to go ahead and pay that that was budgeted for that or weighed on that, or? Go ahead and pay that?
I'll make the motion. We go ahead and pay the seven thousand.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
And, I mean, next month I'll have a second quarter budget report so that we can go over that and see where, where we are in our budgets for all those, you know, for where we stand for the second quarter, but I think everything else is in mind. If anybody, I do have a year-to-date budget, if you want to look at it, but we'll discuss it next time.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the all funds financial report.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Anything on the right-to-know officer's report? If you guys have questions, you can ask me. Just a comment along those lines, we budgeted six thousand dollars for solicitor fees. We're already over seven thousand for the year since we're in June, so we're going to figure out where the rest of the year, so what the solicitor money is going to come from. Any thoughts, more comments, or think about that for the next meeting? Your master's report?
Since last month, more or less, finished everything we could do for the most part as well as raining, just working on equipment. Now, we're getting ready to get things ready for both of our projects that we got on Blue Ball on Grenable Road. Finished up with Blue Ball, there's dirt on the orders today to get things in line. Next week, hopefully, we can work at Grenable Road. Started mowing, I got most of that done. We had a new employee start. He seems to be doing pretty well. Still early, but he seemed to be good. Chris Myers from the Conservation District called me today and said that we got both of the grants that we put in for, so they're, they want to pay, they'll pay for the full desert reclamation on Blue Ball and-
That's seventy-three thousand, right?
Between sixty or seventy, I forget.
Seventy, actually, seventy-three. I don't know why I tapped that.
So, with that money left over, I got a quote from Pine Trick and I pretty, between thirty, I think it was between thirty and thirty-seven thousand, Windstone to Township Blue Ball, I'd like to, or Green Grove. So, I'd like to do that this year and try and hold that together while we, now that we have money for it, since we got that green, pay for Blue Ball. So, other than that, I don't really have.
Well, Blue Ball gets, what, a double seal coat on it?
Blue Ball's going to get paid, Holbaker's paying that, and then Grenable Road's going to get a partnership after the, they have the whole road.
Whole road, yeah.
Yeah, you guys already made, made money for that. I talked to everybody about, on, for both the projects, everybody's, should be on pretty much the same page right now. I got a meet with those guys, a little bit closer to date, tentatively, except for the week of June twenty-fifth, to do both them projects, and then we'll have to pay you after that and Township after that as well.
You might want to just tell them what the second project is for. I guess, do you know what the project is?
So, the second, the second dirt grabber project, I would need a gap, is more or less from, I hate to say, more, more or less around Donnie's house and up would be the best way to describe it, is Sweetwater Ranch, Sweetwater Ranch Lane somewhere in there. The last one stopped, there's a series of six culvert pipes going in after we try and fill in the existing road there because it's completely entrenched, and it takes all the water the whole way from the top of Lingle Valley and Dagger Valley down to there, and there's only one spot that it can get off the road on the, I guess it'd be the uphill side, and just fill it in, they're going to haul in shale and get some elevation to the road and put pipes across to get some water out and then tap it with two A, and maybe next year put it for the grant to get DSA on top of it, so. We have a year to do that. They're going to meet with me sometime this week and see if it's even attainable this year because they even said with the weather, everybody's behind, so we'll see what they have to say about that. If we can't get it done this year, we'll do it next year, but see what happens.
It's good next year if we don't use it this year.
Yeah, yeah, Phil told you, but we got both of those grants.
So, like you said, the good thing of getting those grants is that we're saving money, and now we can do a township on Green Grove that we otherwise wouldn't.
Right.
Yeah, maybe you stay up to the mountain, depending on whenever you get done with everything else.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Township of-
I'll make that motion. Yeah, second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Anything else you have? Carol, do you want to give your overview or-
I apologize, I'm so late. Okay, on the advisory board, one thing we have going on, on July twenty-first, we're having a chicken barbecue. It's just the half the chicken. And Jen, you have tickets, I have my tickets. Okay. And they'll be picked up at the, here at the old bridge, it'll be six dollars a half. So, any advisory board member, or tickets will be in the office as well. And then the other thing is, we'd like to, do you know who all has keys for the building?
Yeah, I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Because Jim was, and Donnie, you were too, a little worried about, like, they come to open the building and it's long been open, so they were just a little-
Probably in the morning yet would be Joan. On Saturday and Sunday. I think it's just Joan coming in for exercise classes in the mornings on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
I usually unlock it every other day, so it's not ever opened on big days.
Is it just the Saturday and Sunday, Donnie?
That's the only time they open.
Most of the time, probably, yes. But there's still a lot of keys out that has never been asked to be turned back yet.
Okay. And the other, probably the most important thing we have is that we have four people that we're looking for, the Board of Supervisors, to support our recommendation to appoint these individuals to our advisory board. And they are Nancy Hartman, she lives here in Spring Mills. She was a former schoolteacher, and she has a lot of fundraising background. Denise Immel, who also lives here.
Do you know how to spell her last name?
I-M-M-E-L.
Thanks.
And she also lives here in Spring Mills. She has banking background, and so she's a good money person. And then we have Kevin Long. He's just moved back again, but he was, went to this school himself, and he's an engineer, so it's always nice to have an engineer in your back pocket. And then Christine Saylor, she's also from Greg Township as well, moved back, and she has extensive money fundraising background and internet and computer skills. So, we're hoping that you will back us in putting these people on board.
Any questions of those people, or a motion to approve?
It sounds, they all sound good to me, you know. I'll make the motion to be approved. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. That makes us ten, I believe, now.
I forgot one thing. The request that we had from residents about putting a hidden driveway sign up on Green Grove, I was just curious on what you guys wanted to do on that slash stop sign. Maybe it should be a stop sign, a head sign.
Well, when he explained it to me, it just sounded like it's not, it's not really a hidden driveway, but-
Yeah. I mean, you guys know my opinion on signs. I don't want any more of it. So, you can decide what to do from there.
I think that if he's willing to pay for it, just put a hidden driveway sign, that's my thoughts. The whole point is to get people to slow down, whether you have a stop sign ahead or a hidden driveway, that's, either one of those should make that happen, or the people just walk through, no matter what signs they're put.
Now, you've had conversations with us first.
Just one time.
Yeah.
If we do a stop sign ahead, then we have to make, then it's ours and we'll pay for it.
Well, so is the hidden driveway sign. I mean, we don't pay for it, but we still have to maintain it.
They requested it. A stop sign ahead would be more so ours.
But what happens in ten years and they're not there anymore? Eighteen years from the sign.
If it occurs and others doesn't want it, we'll break it down. I'll make the motion to go ahead and contact these people about the driveway sign, and tell them that they need to pay for it, and so, put it up. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Other unanimous? Yes. Unfinished business, codification, is there any update on that?
Should be seen. I haven't heard very much.
What's the timeline on that again? Codification?
Probably within the next month.
Oh.
Ball field, a couple items on there. Little League is purchased under surveillance signs, and they are going to install those, correct? The pavilion sand volleyball pit for the Penns Valley Youth Center Serv Camp, I gave you that letter from Darren Marver, the director of the Penns Valley Youth Center. They have their Serv Camp coming up Sunday to Wednesday, a number of service projects they're doing around Greg Township and other areas, including here's the Old Bridge School. Weeding, painting of the curb, lawn seeding from what they did down at the ball field, work at the food center. And then they have discussed with us two other possible projects at the ball field. We had, or you guys last year had, put in the budget doing a pavilion, just like this one down at the ball field. So, that money's already been set aside, so they would install the pavilion for us. So, that's one of the projects. The other one is to construct a sand volleyball court down there as well. You can see here, it would be thirty-five hundred dollars. That would include all these things listed here. That could be reduced by removing the perimeter curb and edge guard, but then you have maintenance issues with grass going into the sand. That would come out of the rec be and lou, which has over fifty-five hundred dollars?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six hundred. So, they are looking for those approvals tonight so that they can get the stuff ordered to be here in time.
Okay, so they would actually build the pavilion next week?
Yeah. They'll partially construct it next week. The trusses from Penn Valley Building Supply are delayed, so they wouldn't be here in time. So, then they'll come back and-
Okay, is there a picture of it, or?
It's the exact same.
Exact same.
The playground fund, I mean, some of this, and just talk about the sand volley, if the pavilion costs four thousand, that would take us down to sixteen hundred in rec be and lou. So, the sand volleyball could come out of the playground fund that we had, it would be in addition to, it'd be part of the play, our recreation and playground. So, you'd have to take some of it out of both of those accounts to pay the thirty-five hundred dollars if you're looking at what we have in there.
What kind of money do we have there in total?
Six thousand, well, we have eleven thousand, six hundred in both those funds, so. And we budgeted four thousand plus another thousand to do the-
To do the base on that one.
But, you know, it would sort of just make this a whole, it would make the ball though the-
Oh, it'd be a nice addition to it.
And while it's all tore up down there, makes sense to do it now instead of reseeding and then doing it in the future. And then they're going to reseed whatever spaces.
Did Darren say anything about help with ex-solving the sand, the sand pit for the volleyball field?
I talked to Brandon about that. They could do that tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Good. I think it'd be a nice addition.
So, if we take the total amount of the pavilion out of the rec be and lou, that would still leave sixteen hundred dollars in there. If you make a motion, I would say a thousand out of the rec be and lou, the remainder out of the playground fund, if you make that motion. Just so you make sure you say it in your motion, if I, I guess I'm getting that, if you make the motion.
If we have the fund, don't make a motion to do that. Yeah, I'll second the motion. I'm not sure which one it could matter, but I mean, does it-
Well, she, she said how it would come out.
Yeah.
So, the motion would be to go ahead and sand volleyball court with funds coming out of the playground and rec be and lou, how you want to say, if you want to give yourself some sense. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Just one second. Because the pavilion is already in the budget, do we need a motion to do that? It's just a budget of the line item, do we want to go ahead and make a motion to report with the pavilion out of the rec be and lou account?
I think you should, just in case. Might as well.
I'll make that motion as well, Jen. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I'm here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Do you need EMS funding? We already gave you all the approvals.
Oh, right. I, that, that was sort of just a leftover, there's that meeting on June nineteenth and-
We still will have that four thousand dollars hanging in the air that, we approved four thousand out of the Old Bridge School.
So, I don't think I've paid that yet either, so I should go ahead and pay the seven thousand and the four thousand, like, if we made those two motions and get that paid off, then we would be four thousand.
And then we'll still need to revisit the four thousand remaining. Pliget procurement card, First National Bank Business Card, last month we had approved, moving forward with applying for the Pliget procurement card. In the meantime, First National Bank has gotten in touch with Jen, and they also have something similar to that where it's not attached to any individual social security.
I, this depends on how you want to do it. I mean, Pliget, I don't have, I mean, First National Bank, we don't have any funds there. It would be as simple as applying for their credit card. You'd probably have to open an account, but then we'd transfer money over to that account to pay the bill every month. Same thing with the Pliget card. I don't, it doesn't matter one way or the other, they have the same, it's just this is a little more local that I could easily get the money transferred to. I'm not sure how the Pliget, we have a Pliget account, so it would be just as easy, but I told them I would bring that forward before you guys. So, it's the same thing, it's not, it's, there's no social security numbers that are needed to back the card, it's done by our VIN number. We have that same credit card for the county association.
The First National.
The First National Credit Card. The Pliget card would be great if we, you know, if you spend over fifty thousand dollars, you get, not a refund, or, but it's a rewards or whatever.
Cash back.
Kind of cash back kind of thing. I mean, we would have, we would not even come close to spending fifty thousand unless we paid a lot of our other expenses, like now our monthly expenses, our electric bills and all that stuff with the credit cards and just paid it off every month, so we should make that. Or you could even do big projects like pay for tar, you know, pay return shipping or whatever, if some, not a company accepted credit cards, like a lot of people do that through post-stars, pay with that Pliget card. So, it's just however you guys want me to proceed. Want to bring that for-
Let's go ahead and get the card and-
Which one do you want to try?
It's between Pliget or First National.
What's your preference, Jen? You're working with it.
Well, the Pliget people, the only thing about them was they didn't seem, when I told them I didn't think we'd spend fifty thousand, they weren't like gung-ho to get me signed up. That was the only thing I was like, oh, why would they want me to sign up anyway? I mean, they were just like, you know, here it is, and they haven't even, since last month, they haven't really even followed through with them giving me that. So, I don't think they're, care one way or the other. First National's always, they always want our business. They come in with rates all the time and make this be a step.
I think it'd be good to have our business split a little bit between two banks.
Okay.
I'm particularly interested in what sort of rate-
Yeah, that was in the course fund, as I gave, was those CD rates too, so I guess it's going up apparently.
On the bank statements from Jersey Shore, the CD rates would be on there, wouldn't they? I, I would.
Okay.
So, do you want to make a motion that we go with First National Business Credit Card?
Yeah, make that motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Township map update, we've been working on that, starting to reach out to businesses. Township map update, we've been working on that, starting to reach out to businesses. In case anybody wasn't here, last, last month, we are working on a township map like this. And we have business sponsors from businesses around Greg Township, our map will be here, the location for your business will be on here, and then any other points of interest. Then on the backside of the map, it will have information about the supervisors' meetings, any of the boards, Penns Valley Code Agency, phone numbers, things like that. So if anybody has a business that's interested in advertising on here, get in touch with Jen or I, we have a packet of information about that. So, from the business sponsors, it doesn't cost the township anything to put this map out, but it will be mailed out to every single resident, and every business that sponsors will get a laminated copy of the map as well. Any questions on that?
We've got results sent in spots, not bad. We haven't even tried yet, but, yeah.
Website, we've been, Jen's been working hard on that, it probably will go live tomorrow, if not early next week, we're just waiting on one change to the website before we do that. Once it goes live, obviously we'll start pushing that out. It's still going to be the GregTownship.org, have lots of great information on it. Any questions on the website?
Comes to go live?
Well, when we say it, then we give it approval.
We have a couple things we've just been, to make it easier.
New business, I will entertain a motion to appoint Rob Schaber as road maintenance level two, he started a week and a half ago, almost two weeks now.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Just make sure you announce that we had a discussion, sorry, I forgot to remind you.
I will entertain a motion to authorize and release fire police for annual events.
I'll make that motion. Second here.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to list those, do we, Don? Like outright, we're just any of, any...
No, that's just a...
A blanket statement, okay.
Yeah, because we don't know for sure what comes up.
Okay. Should we say for 2018 events? Do we have to do that every year? Do we do it every year?
Yes.
I'll just make that one straight, motion to approve them to lead to that for annual events. We got contacted at this...
Don, what do you have, it's a fire police ordinance somewhere?
This is just always what we've done.
I respect that.
I don't know, we might have a fire police ordinance, I just know because we pay the workers' comp.
Right.
And so we're authorizing them to go out to these places so that we give them permission and then that will, it's for our insurance.
This is a workers' comp.
It's a, it's an insurance thing, that they, we give them permission to go, and if something were to happen, then they weren't just there on their own, they were there as Greg Township Police Fire Police.
Could be there's an order to self-apply, but I'm not sure.
Right, I don't know. I don't think it is. There's probably an order. Anyway.
We were contacted that the Ball Field needs to have an address for nine-one-one. Did you...
Just because I had asked them about looking, because on the center GIS, I'm looking at you, Chris, doesn't, our property's only at the old grade school, we don't have our deed, the deed that has the Ball Field listed, it doesn't even show that, so I was just asking them about that, and I don't know if that's how, but somehow the addressing said that because there's new people that dispatch and not everybody knows where the Ball Field is, we have to have a nine-one-one address for the Ball Field. So I'm not sure how we marked that, they gave us the address of, I think, one oh eight, is it one oh eight? I have it there, Harry. One oh six...
Ten three, ten sixty-five, sixty...
Oh, ten, sorry, really off. So we just, I don't know if we need to get those fire company signs and put it on a pole or how we mark ten sixty-five. She just said it has to be marked, so. Would we just put one of those new things you guys are selling on the...
There's a pole down there.
A pole, that's what I would think.
There's a telephone pole down in the corner.
There's that electric pole there, so, all right.
So we just need to prove that address. Motion to approve ten sixty-five.
I'll make that motion.
The address for the Ball Field.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
And to purchase the address sign.
Yeah, do that separate, make a motion to approve the address.
Do you know who made it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to purchase the address sign.
I'll make your motion as well, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Just, we had gotten a letter from our engineer regarding Sarah Campbell Lane, or it was a bill for work for Sarah Campbell Lane, so we paid the bill, but then forwarded the bill to Penns Cave, and we're waiting on them to reimburse us for that. There was also in an email from him, not a blanket on his name.
Don Franzen.
Don Franzen. He was requested to attend a meeting regarding Sarah Campbell Lane, and he was looking for us to approve him going to this meeting, but it will still be billed to, it'll be billed to us and then reimbursed again through Penns Cave.
I don't know if Penns Cave's aware of that, so I'm not sure what they're going to say when a bill comes, an invoice comes from me saying to pay for this engineering cost, I don't know how that will go, but that was the instructions I got from Don, and he said that that's how the township has worked. I've never gone through this before, he said when this Don Phil's subdivision was created, he would go represent the township in meetings and such, bill the township, and then the township would bill the developer, and, and because he can't, I said, why can't you bill us Penns Cave directly, and he said because he's not working for Penns Cave, he's working for us. And so, I'm, I'm not sure if Penns Cave is going to be aware of that, but I sent them the bill.
How were you aware of that, Chris?
That's correct, and that's the way it works in any municipality, and they're responsible for the deed, so there really isn't...